Welcome, everyone, to the Board of Trustees Meeting for April 29, 2015. As many of you are aware from our last meeting in between, Lauren Hill passed. She's an amazing person. What she accomplished in her 19 years is probably more than a lot of us will accomplish in a lifetime. So, we'll take a moment of silence for her and then do the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, we have exciting meeting. And we'll start off with the presentation. Mr. Landrum.
Yes, tonight is, we already started it today with the Oversight Committee meeting, our first was held today. And I want to introduce to you StanTech as a company first. They've been in business since 1954, so they've been around. One thing that was really exciting with us doing our request for qualifications was the number of people that submitted, the number of companies. There was 12. For, you know, Delhi, you know, we would always consider Delhi as a little Delhi, you know, we're not Columbus, we're not Cincinnati, we're not this Chicago or something like that. So, when we got that amount of interest, we knew that myself and Tom and Catherine's feelings were correct. We were on to something. I present to you StanTech and of, with StanTech, they committed to a smaller version, a sub, it's not a company, but a section of them called Urban Places Group, in which Steve Kearney is going to be our project manager. Steve joins us as a, he's had many years' experience even with another city at point in time, so he does have government experience. This is not his first rodeo. So, StanTech has more than 15,000 employees in over 250 locations. They do have a Cincinnati office as well. So, you know, there's a lot to be said. I'm going to let Steve start here and if you'd welcome him and remind everybody 6:30 tonight at the lodge, soon as we can get out of here, so as soon as I can be quiet and let Steve take it from here. Steve, you're on.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The, I have a presentation here, now, let me, hold on.
Coming up.
It's coming up, okay, great. I have a presentation that's coming up. It is, you know, essentially the presentation I gave to the Oversight Committee today and a version of what will be presented to the public tonight. I will speak quickly and go through the slides quickly. I've got a 15-minute timeframe that I'll hold to, and I promise I'll hold to it. So, if I, if there's something that I jump over that catches your eye, please just stop me or ask a question at the end. So, quickly, next slide. You really just want to talk about, you know, introduce who we are. Pete just gave us a good sense of it. But I want to talk about, you know, the process that we'll be going through, you know, the market focus that's very important to us, it's how we do our planning and how we'll do it here. I want to speak to why this probably is the right time to be conducting a plan, this time in many cities and townships. I want to give a quick overview of the planning process and then just speak to how we'll, you know, involve the community and how we, you know, really consider community engagement so important. Next slide, which is, again, just said, StanTech, 15,000 employees strong. We were brought on a group of about 15 now to help them understand and be more focused on urban development. And again, when we talk about urban development, we really are talking about creating that urban environment. It's both in a city and a small town, but it is the area where the community comes together, lives together, celebrates together, shops, works together, plays together, and that is the area that we really like to work within existing communities and sometimes new communities, but we like to build that environment. Next slide. Just to point out the reason why we came to StanTech, what we were excited about and what's been effective, very effective so far, we have offices across the country, in Cincinnati and in Columbus, environmental experts, transportation experts, you name it, engineers, civil infrastructure. We can reach out to all of them when we need something, and that is what's so important to us as we work in cities across the country. Next slide. And again, we can skip it, urban environments, this is a project in Columbus, Ohio. Our team, I am the project manager, David Dixon, who will be here for the three-day big event in June, is the principal, national renowned really as an urban planner, urban designer, has been doing it for about 40 years, and I followed over. He's been important to this process and he's pulling it all together. In addition, again, urban planning, we have the market analysis. I'll speak to them on the next slide, so perfect timing. This market-driven approach, we have two major market analysts on our team, both work nationally, and they are WZVA Zimmerman Voke Associates and WZH A. Lori at ZVA Zimmerman Voke, she does our residential market analysis. This is critical to our work because it will tell us, you know, over the next five to seven years, how many new households would likely come into Delhi Township, what they're looking for in terms of housing type, be it single-family through multifamily, townhomes, owner and rental. It'll tell us how much they're willing to pay, how much they're able to pay, and what size of a unit they are looking for. That helps us shape our plans in a very realistic way. Next slide. The way that we can do that, and once we have that information, we start to do the financing. We've met with stakeholders from, already about 15 stakeholders, we'll continue to meet with them. For those who I've met with a few in this room, what I've, keep saying is what we're trying to do on this first trip, on each trip coming up, is identify the entities, organizations, individuals, property owners, who have an opportunity or are interested in or possibly could connect with other implementers to actually hit opportunities right off the bat. Our goal is to see implementation, activities, initiatives occurring right for the moment the plan is adopted. Next slide. And again, I just went through the housing, but again, it is important to develop the density, the environment, the 18-hour likely in Delhi Township, but it creates activity on the street which creates the safety and creates the environment we're looking for. Next. And this is essentially, what's important about our residential market analysis is we're not looking at comps, we're looking at future mobility, where individuals are moving to, both from within the region and outside the region, who's coming here, and then we'll take a look at who are they, how old are they, what are their preferences, and it'll help us understand, are we designing and planning for millennials, for empty nesters, or, you know, for a market in between, Gen Xers, which unfortunately, being one of them, we're one of the smallest, so no one pays that much attention to us. And we're not driving markets. The other two are, but we need to know which side because it helps us understand what we're going for. Next slide. Again, I'm going to go through several examples of work that we have done. This is current right now, Miami Township, Ohio, Dayton Mall area master plan. And again, to give you a sense of what I just went through, yellow is residential, red on the first floor is retail. This is a very careful study based on what the market, that we feel we can achieve over the next 10 years, and how in that sense, we can create a new Main Street going across what is right now the mall property. If, for anyone who knows the area, Mad River is the street that we would essentially be connecting all the way down to Miami Township's municipal property and the library. And again, for us, a very exciting way to connect a regional destination shopping, which is important, with the cultural and civic activities of township, and doing so and creating a new town center for, you know, Miami Township, which is what they're calling for. Next slide. High Street, Columbus, Ohio, just to show, you know, how you can really create a there, there from an area that had not had it or didn't have it for a long time. This was one of our first projects, David Dixon, in Columbus, and really, it's millions of square feet of student housing and market-rate housing, retail. It has transformed the area around OSU. Next. And East Franklinton, one of my favorite, also in Columbus, and this was about Mayor Coleman, who's looking for an arts and innovation district, and what we were able to do is show how you can design that and create an affordable component into it long-term. The reason why I wanted to show this as an example is because it's basically saying, you know, there's ways to look at, you know, what is going to make a place really work. In Mayor Coleman's terms, he wanted funky. Here, it may very well be, well, I know it's going to be, it's family-oriented, and it's been great. I've heard it from every single person that we've spoken to. I'm assuming I'm going to hear that message tonight, and that really speaks to what we can and should be looking at in terms of design. Next. And just Dublin, Ohio, again, one of the projects that we were involved in. This is the classic retrofitting suburbia, and again, it is a result of what's happening in our cities. The suburb essentially recognized the fact that their 22- to 34-year-olds were choosing Columbus over Dublin, which was a first in a generation for them. And you'll see a couple of slides, it'll zip through, there's reasons for this. Next. Yeah, and Sandy Springs, we can skip, just another example. Stakeholders just beginning, this is the list, over the last two days, again, we'll continue, but again, I list these for any other individual stakeholders who, anyone behind me as well, thinks we should be speaking to, get in touch with Peter, Catherine, and let us know, and we will meet with them when we're here or we'll call to get the information. It's important to us to talk to as many as we can. You know, this about families, this is just ongoing, I had no time to even pull this together, this was from today, but again, important things, you know, about families, you know, we want to make sure that families do continue to stay here, that is important, and, you know, I heard slightly differing, but they are coming, they typically do come back. You know, not on the main line, the main drag, but again, that's actually a positive as much as, you know, it's hurting our retail side. We're looking at these. And again, the Pike is improving, that's a critical market standpoint. Most that we've spoken to says the Pike is in better shape now than it was five years ago. That shows the markets there. The development that's occurring shows that there's a market there, again, building blocks that we'll start to work from. Next. And this, we can skip through, just some slides, this was some work done with Catherine over the summer, again, just about, you know, what is important to the community. And demographics, skip, and, you know, go to the next one. And just to talk about Ohio, the point of these three slides is, and this is not just Ohio, it's across the country. Fifty years ago, from 1950 up until 90, most households were traditional families. That was the predominant type that fueled suburban development and single-family development across the country, and as much here, you're looking at, you know, the majority of households are now one and two-family households, they don't necessarily need a large property, a single-family house, and they're also older, and more so in Ohio than probably many places in this country. The age group over 55 essentially is representing all of Ohio's growth and will for the, you know, the next 20 years. Again, it's just helping us understand that there's probably a real need for diversity of housing choices. I like to say, anyone who's been to the Green in Beaver Creek and some other developments, Austin Landing, just because those I'm more familiar with, but more are coming down this way, the market's already telling us that, you know, with the, everyone, many are looking for are the multifamily with amenities right nearby, and that's again, opportunities that we'll seek to understand. Next slide. And again, I, you know, I'm just going to skip, but the fact is, you know, I always like to use golf as an example, it's lost 10 million, golfing industry's lost 10 million golfers in the last 10 years, and it's changing. Families are changing, families aren't spending, dads aren't spending Saturdays on the golf course anymore. And what is trending is walkable streets, transit diversity, sustainability, these are, these are, these are proving across our country. Next slide. And this is important, too. Again, this is looking at, you know, national statistics, but in 2008, you're looking at, you know, 27% multifamily, predominantly single-family households, that is absolutely the case still, but going forward, you know, projections are beginning to look at a higher level of multifamily, and that's something that, again, it creates an opportunity. It's not in every place, and nor will it make sense in every location, but there is an opportunity, a market that we're trying to look into. Next slide. And this is, you know, important, and again, while there's not a huge job market here, there is certainly a job market here, something that's happening is we're not educating our young people in this country to the level that they need to be for the jobs that actually are growing and will be available. And that's just important because we want to think about that, and we want to think about what these types of jobs are, because that changes the type of space that these individuals are willing to work in. And in the case of, next slide, younger generation, and we can skip two slides, but they are looking, the next, they're looking for environments where, you know, they are having fun in and where they can work in, and that can help us likely to a small degree in terms of filling some of the office space. The fact that you have Cincinnati so close, 18 minutes away, again, with significant job opportunities and, you know, immediate destination here with great schools, you know, there's a lot of assets that we're finding and building on. This is just showing that national builders who are always focused on single-family have now switched into multifamily, again, supporting the idea that markets are changing and we're trying to understand them. Next slide. And even for the simple piece of, you know, retrofitting a parking lot in a suburban strip commercial area, this is in Denver, Colorado, a project that we did, and it is about creating a food destination, local food destination, has been hugely successful and a very fairly simple way of just building on a surface parking lot and creating a whole new environment, and even with cars essentially a bit of a gathering space, which is, again, ideas we'll be looking at. Next slide. And this was just a whim, I want to emphasize, I put this in, I threw this image together in the proposal, and it was the idea of, you know, you have the scale already on the Pike, when you look at your existing net, you know, family, two-story that are now businesses, you know, bumping up to three stories on the other side, you actually, within one potential development, and I'm making this up, I made this up, but again, within one potential development, you're looking at a block of Main Street, and that could actually happen within, you know, one to two years. I mean, that's to show what we got excited about by the size, scale, and opportunities within here. Next slide. And again, and I'm going to go fast right now, this is what we put into the proposal, how we start thinking about it. Next slide. You know, this retail core, this Main Street, this Main Street, this gateway, I've learned over the last two days, retail core right on, Main Street on the right, yes, gateway, yes, but, you know, we've got a lot of things that we need to talk about within that area, and as we learn more and more, this is going to change. Next slide. And again, this is recent, just from Nels, our urban designer, who was doing the walks over yesterday and today, we're starting to look at, you know, potential sites that we might want to really start to look at. And this is, we're going to hear more about this evening, and we'll continue to talk about it. The park, a great destination, great amenity, how, you know, there's probably a nice opportunity to really create a better, stronger connection there. Next slide. And again, you know, these catalyst sites, this is what we're going to do next, we have to read, figure out where we're looking, we'll come up with development concepts, we'll test them financially, and we'll show how we can get developer interest. Next slide. And this, I'm going to run through in my last minute, very quickly, but this is just, you know, how we will do it. We are going to look at what sites are actually available, what's the land use, what's the land value, in other words, what is the profit opportunities on these, how are we increasing the value of these properties, because again, they are private properties. Next slide. And we'll create, you know, a ranking for each of them. Next slide. And we'll start to layer those, you know, the existing conditions, just slide through these slowly over on each of them so that we can help, this is what we did in Miami Township, to identify the locations for development, and we will do the same here, and hopefully that will help pinpoint some of these sites or solidify, make valid some of the sites we're looking at. Again, right there, and to the next. And it was a way of, next slide, of just, it pinpointed, you know, two areas, run through this because you've already seen it, you could show the area all the way to the left that has no development on there, we don't think we have an opportunity yet for that location. We can stop right there, that's what the Oversight Committee needs to do. It was a great Oversight Committee, we've had, it's been great so far, you know, day two, almost over. And 5:45.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any questions now or in the future? Pete can certainly.
I think we're going to deserve a lot of them for the lodge tonight, so we'll finish this and see you out there.
Excellent, and that's where I'm running off to right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Have a good one.
Next, we'll do motions for consideration, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2015-066, approve the minutes of the regular Board of Trustee meeting held on April 8, 2015, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2015-066 to approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-067, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2015-067 to approve bills for payment.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-068, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending April 14, 2015.
I move motion 2015-068 to approve overtime.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-069, schedule the first of two public hearings concerning construction, repair, or maintenance of sidewalks, curbs, and gutters along various township streets for Wednesday, May 27, 2015, at 6:00 PM, and redirecting notice by mail and publication as required by law and the township's policy and procedures.
I move motion 2015-069 to schedule the two public hearings for sidewalks, as noted.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-070, accept the voluntary resignation of part-time firefighter/paramedic Brian A. Booker, effective April 29, 2015.
I move motion 2015-070 to accept the resignation of firefighter/paramedic Brian Booker.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-071, authorize the township administrator to sign the Hamilton County Storm Water District, Storm Water District level of service and service fees for 2016.
I move motion 2015-071, authorizing the administrator to sign on behalf of the township for Hamilton County Storm Water.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2015-072, authorize the township administrator to sign on behalf of the Delhi Township Board of Trustees, authorizing Duke Energy Retail, Dinerji, to file the required annual report to the Ohio Public Utilities Commission.
I move motion 2015-072, authorizing the administrator to sign on behalf of the township for Duke Energy, the annual Ohio Public Utilities Commission.
Second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next, trustee correspondence, trustee Seavy.
Nothing this evening.
Trustee Clug.
Nothing this evening.
And nothing from me? There are no reports from the fiscal officer?
No report.
No public hearing, so we'll do reports from departments, Mr. Landrum.
Real quick, I just wanted, for record and a thank you, that was given to the township from the City of Cincinnati, from City Council, and the mayor did a motion and they mailed it to us as well, thanking us and our volunteers that volunteered firefighters to cover for the funeral, and so just wanted to make a note of that, that we did receive that, and that was very nice of them to acknowledge our assistance for them.
Next, we'll do reading of resolutions, Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2015-045, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the township by the township administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the most dispensed with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-046, resolution approving revisions to the Delhi Township investment policy, ordering filing with the state auditor, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-047, resolution designating public depositories per revised code 135.12, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, fiscal officer Looby?
We received three depository applications, one from Huntington Bank, Key Bank, and PNC Bank. Once we receive all the proposals, we will make an evaluation and then make a decision who's going to take care of our everyday banking.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-048, resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Group Rating Program with the Ohio Township Association, effective January 1, 2016, retaining CareWorks Comp as its representative, authorizing the township administrator to execute and submit all required participation documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Margie?
This is simply a resolution accepting CareWorks Comp as our third-party administrator for our BWC claims. In the past, we've always used Frank Gates Company, and CareWorks Comp has bought out that company, so they've merged into one. We will be dealing with the same people, we will be a part of the same group rating program through the Ohio Township Association, it is simply a name change.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-049, resolution declaring certain police vehicles and equipment no longer needed for public use, and authorizing the sale to the Hardin County Board of Commissioners, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Chief Howarth?
This is, thank you, President, this is a replacement of the current vehicles, it's a normal rotation. Hardin County actually has been purchasing our vehicles, I guess this is about three or four years now, so they buy them sight unseen, so.
Wow.
Works out good, so they're just waiting for the approval and we'll meet them halfway.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution 2015-050, resolution declaring a certain police vehicle and equipment no longer needed for public use, and authorizing the sale to the City of Kenton, Ohio, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Chief Howarth?
Thank you, this is also a vehicle in our normal rotation. It is a Dodge, and Hardin County was not interested in the Dodge, they got off Ford Crown Vix, the older style, so we put it out statewide, and the City of Kenton responded to us, and they're awaiting the approval so they can take possession of the vehicle also.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2015-051, resolution imposing parking restrictions on Holliday Hill Drive at Gross Point Lane, directing the placement of signs, posting and publication in accordance with revised code 505.17, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Ripinger?
I did work with the police on this, we did talk to the houses nearby for parking, and it's mainly what I like to call a lay of the land. The road on Holliday Hill is pretty hilly and you just can't see the cars coming, so that's the main reason.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Luby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand fifteen zero five two, resolution acknowledging donation from and entering into a sponsor agreement with Shermar of Cincinnati, Inc., DBA Rapid Run La Roses, for the football athletic field scoreboard during two thousand fifteen, authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Torbeck?
Thank you. It's a, pretty simple. It's already in place. This is just a continued relationship. It's a one-year agreement with an option to extend, so nothing's really changing. We're just keeping everything currently in place.
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How much do we get for that?
Sixteen hundred and fifty a year.
Okay, thank you.
Feel better?
Yes. One dollar. I second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Luby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand fifteen zero five three, resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a use authorization agreement with the Hamilton County for use of its firing range, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand fifteen zero five four, resolution authorizing addendum to contract to purchase for the property located at sixty-eight fifty Hillside Avenue, authorizing, authorized at resolution two thousand fifteen zero three four, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand fifteen zero five five, resolution entering into a project services agreement with LAN RM Technologies LLC for information technology services, authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move to dispense with the second reading.
Second, second the motion dispensed with second reading.
All those in favor of the motion dispensed with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Luby, please call roll.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Seavy?
Yes.
Mrs. Clug?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution two thousand fifteen zero five six, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation and accumulated debris of five-three-two Palmerston Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce to move the adoption of this resolution.
Second the adoption of the resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Oswald. We received a complaint on this vacant property of accumulated debris and excessive vegetation. We issued orders with no compliance. We inspected the property today, and it's the same, so we're requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so can address these violations with our nuisance procedures.
Is it foreclosed?
Uh, Dave, I don't have a copy of the...
Or is it just a rental?